The April 24th meeting, the fourth order, will stand with the allegiance and moment of time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the April 10th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve the minutes from the April 10th, 2017 meeting.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes from the April 10th meeting with the court police call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Dillon?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Sharer?
Yes.
Snipes?
Yes.
I mean, our standing here.
Just for reference, several people are out this first part of the week, so you see a lot of up fillings, but Zach had some rental duties to prepare for tonight, and both our chiefs are at professional training duties, so.
Next item will be statement of bills paid in the amount of $155,008, 27.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to pay the statement of bills, $155,008, 27.
Second?
It has been moved in second to approve the bills with the court police call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Dillon?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Sharer?
Yes.
Snipes?
Next item on the agenda will request your comments from the public. You state your name and address.
Gary Carpenter, 11030 River View. First of all, see if we can get some help on River View, and is there a timeline? Have they said anything about a timeline and when they're going to do anything to that culvert down there?
I know it's out, I believe I have it, but I don't know.
Okay.
I understand they did approve the repair of it, and they're trying to decide whether they're going to make one or two. That's the last thing I heard, Gary.
Okay, well, there's another culvert right by my 1111180 River View. There's a culvert there, and it sunk so bad that I was standing out there, and the cars were starting to bottom out. I think they need to put a metal plate over it. Well, somebody might get hurt if that collapses.
Yeah, what is the address of that one?
11180 River View.
Okay.
I called out there once this last week, and nobody did anything. I'd like to see if we can get some patches on some of those holes that are falling apart. I know the road's bad, but at least, you know, get a little patch or something to help us out up there.
Like I said, I understand that they approved the budget to do it, so, and whether they were going to, how they were going to resolve this number of culverts, I don't know.
No, I think metal plate would be, at least.
The years is a total different one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I'm just wondering, since they're doing that dirt work up there, is there any, what's the dates or anything for taking out 110th Street to redo all that, and what's that's going to, how that's going to affect the neighbors?
As far as the closure of 110th?
Yeah, is it going to be completely closed, or is it going to be lanes open?
Lanes open north-south during construction.
During all the construction?
That is planned, I mean.
And I went to that planning and zoning meeting out in Bonner, and that Lane 4 attorney said that there are going to be 2,400 jobs at that industrial park over there. Are we going to, is Lane 4 going to redesign the intersection of 110th Street up there before they start and then have to redo it? 2,400 cars is a lot of cars, I thought, but is that, how's that going to affect that intersection? Are they going to redesign before they do it, or are they going to put it in and then find out it's too small? General Motors, I don't think, had that many people per shift down there, and man, we have a hell of a parking lot, so I, is it even feasible to have 2,400 cars put through there?
Mayor, if it's all right, can I ask a question? I mean, just real quick, I just want to know who he said said that.
Lane 4 attorney?
Are you talking?
Maxwell?
Maxwell, okay.
Yeah, Maxwell.
All right.
He said there's going to be 2,400 people. I don't know whether that's true or not, but then there's another problem, too. I had to put that up. Planning and zoning, I, we were the last ones, and there was not very many, but there was Edwardville people there, and we were completely disrespected. Somebody, I guess, defaced their sign up there that they posted for the zoning change, and we got an ass chewing.
Your time is up.
We got, we got, we got, but the Edwardville, we were completely disrespected up there. We got chewed out by one of those planners for no reason at all, because we had nothing to do with them.
If there are no others, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Consider Resolution 2017-09 consenting to the execution and delivery of an assessment, assignment of lease agreement related to board, bond documents, and a estoppel. What is that certificate for the JDC LLC second project? You can tell us, but I've heard that term before. What is a estoppel?
Mayor, council member, Scott Anderson, Bond Council. In a stop, well, I'll start at the beginning. The city's previously issued its industrial revenue bonds for a 270,000 square foot warehouse and distribution facility at 9601 Woodend Road. At that time, the city took a lease of the project from Woodend Industrial 2 and then leased the property back to Woodend. Woodend Industrial 2 now desires to sell its leasehold interest from the project. It's going to sell it to Stag Industrial Holdings LLC. Evan Fitz from Polsonelli, the attorney for Stag, is here. I'll let him speak in a minute, and he can tell you who Stag is. As part of the sale of the project, the city's done this numerous times, because you have a leasehold interest in a project, we have to assign, we have to consent to the assignment of the lease from Woodend Industrial 2 to Stag, and then consent to the assignment of all the bond documents. So what that means is Woodend Industrial 2 is basically stepping out of the project, and Stag Industrial is now stepping into the project. So we'll look to them for making of all the pilot payments, and they'll effectively be the owners of the building. Whenever you have an assignment, we have, generally we have two documents at the city's signs. The first is the assignment assumption of lease agreement and other bond documents. That's where the bond documents are transferred from Woodend to Stag. The city and the trustee both consent to that. The second document is the estoppel certificate. Because there's a, it's common whenever you transfer property that's subject to a lease, the party that's acquiring the property wants to know that the lease is in good standing, there's no events of default under the lease, and basically Woodend Industrial's done everything they're supposed to do under that lease. That's what the estoppel certificate says. We have a form that we use here in Edwardville, and we've used it for some time, and it basically just says there's no defaults under the deal, and they've done everything they have to do. As you remember, this project was the one that had the employment requirements that we addressed probably a couple of months ago, where we said that we were satisfied with the employment out there, and this estoppel certificate also contains a recital that we're good with the employment on that. Evan, you want to talk for a minute and tell us who Stag is?
Thank you. Evan Fitz of Polsonelli, I appreciate you having me tonight. I just wanted to tell you, just in one minute here, who Stag is, so you have a little bit better idea of who you're going to be doing business with. Obviously, they're purchasing the property from this Woodend entity, which is a subsidiary of Van Trust Real Estate, a quality developer who does good work around this area. Stag is not from this area, they're from Boston, but they are, I got to look at my notes here, they told me a few things they might have mentioned. They're a publicly traded real estate investment trust, so on the New York Stock Exchange. They currently have over 300 properties in 38 states, approximately 50 million square feet of industrial property around the U.S. They brought, are in the business of buying properties exactly like this property as a means of a long-term ownership scenario for their investors that purchase stock in their company. They're currently buying about 40 a year, and in their investment strategy, they build to, you know, an approximate 20-year hold period, so they do intend to hold this long-term and be the long-term owner and operator of this. They also wanted me to make very clear that they had an in-house asset management team, so all of their buildings are run in a quality manner, maintained, you know, kept up to the highest standards for this type of property. They have a lot of experience with securing good quality tenants and making an asset like this work really well, and so they happened to kind of turn on to this one, and now they're very interested in the market, actually have expressed interest in doing other things. So I hope you consider that a good thing. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and we just appreciate the help. Thanks.
Thank you. What's, do you know what their net worth is?
I don't, but actually, all of their documents, anything pertaining to their net worth or assets is all publicly available, it's a publicly traded company. So Stag Industrial Holdings LLC is a subsidiary of Stag Industrial, Inc., and that is actually a publicly traded company. So if you have any interest in looking them up, you know, again, their New York Stock Exchange initials are STAG, S-D-A-G, and you'd be able to find any of their annual quarterly filings that they're required to make, and it would disclose absolutely any you want to know about them.
Yeah, thanks.
So as we know, it's common on projects such as this, we have the developers, Van Trust came to town to build a couple of buildings, and now we have the long-term holders come in and acquire the property, and hopefully hold it for some time. But I'm happy to take any questions you have, or any questions on the documents.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-09.
It has been moved in the second to adopt Resolution 2017-09 with the court police call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Dillon?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Sharer?
Yes.
Snipes?
I agree, of course. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. I just have a few items, and if something comes up, I'll try to answer those questions. I will just say that I will follow up with the city of Bonner Springs related to the planning of the project, and I do know that they have been working on it, and I just don't know the time, so I'll find that out and let you know. Probably the biggest item right now is we have this little festival that comes up here in about four or five days. It starts technically Friday evening, 5:00. It runs through Saturday evening about 11:00 P.M. Obviously, things will start happening probably Thursday. We may expect to see some of the barbecue teams coming in, some of the other vendors will be arriving, and so over the next end part of this week, will be a lot happening. I know we still can use volunteers, so if you have an interest, I think there's an online signup that you can go to from our website or from the, from that website. One of the things we did this year, a little different, is we always try to make sure that all the elementary kids in the USD 204 district can come participate in the jump houses and games and things without any cost to them. So in the past, we've had some specific, I guess, vendors to support that. One of the things we did this year was ask for volunteers to take care of working that, so instead of having to pay people to be there, we could get volunteers, I think we needed about 60 volunteers, and I think most of the slots will fill. I know there's a few openings here and there to help with that, so. I think it's always something we try to do, is make that a family event. We have music both Friday and Saturday night, that's a little bit different. The barbecue contest will be going on in the front parking lot with the judging in the training room, and so it'll be pretty active out there, and then most of the other activity will occur at the community center, and then the parking lot of the community center in some of those areas. So a lot going on. Reminds you that we do have the Mary's Prayer Breakfast. Actually, I have tickets back in my office, if you want one tonight, we always acquire tickets for that, or new spouse of family, just let me know, and I'll get those, too. So we'll be spending quite a bit of time probably focused on making sure that all goes off with as few pitches as possible. I'm sure there will be one, because there always is. Just a few other on project, just kind of project updates on Village South. Obviously, we've seen a lot of dirt moving. We did meet with kind of the construction team, we just kind of had an initial meeting. We will be retaining SKW to do construction observation on our behalf. That's a cost that will be charged back to the developer, but they have their own testing and their full-time inspections, and that's fine, but just to make sure all those things are in force, all that kind of stuff is being taken care of, and we don't probably have the in-house capacity to spend two or three hours out there, or eight hours some days to do that. So we kind of had a kickoff meeting, and we'll be issuing their permit for the public improvements in the near future. They said at that point they had 69 days minimum of grade work on the site, so yes, they want to get moving, but they have a few other things they've got to still take care of, but as you notice, they are definitely out there working. On the LTC, the Little Turkey Creek portion, which is from where we have the lift station to connect over to the unified government, the lift station, the physical lift station is to be delivered and set on Wednesday, and then there's obviously some tie-ins to that, some electrical work and things like that, but we should go fairly quick. It's, obviously, it's a packaged plant, but I got to get that in, and the electrician has to come in and do all that, so I would expect maybe a 30-day timeframe from the time they set that to basically being operational. Obviously, at this point, there's no flow going into it, so we don't have to actually, there'll be some startup for testing and things like that, but that should kind of complete that portion of it. And then on the 102nd Street, Richland Project, we are finalizing the specifications for that, the plans are pretty well done, the acquisition for the right-of-way, for all intensive purposes are done, there's still some signatures, but the four property owners that are involved around the intersection have either agreed and or signed off on documents, and so we hope to put that out by mid, probably by mid to end of May, and that should be doable, so that there'll be a summer, summer project that will be done before fall. There's not a great deal of grade work, or, you know, there's no big culvert on the act before, some of those kind of things that we had to do on campus. With that, Mayor, I will end there. I know we have some other reports, and if there are questions, then I will address those.
You have a question?
Yes.
The lift, or the lift station that's going in?
Yes.
They delivered the pipes last weekend. I don't know, it'd be kind of a challenge to get something to there right now.
We had a discussion with them today, that that pipe was set there. That is actually piped for, from the lift station ultimately over to the Village South project, and yeah, we were a bit surprised that it was sitting there. I had a discussion today that that pipe needs to get moved, because we can't get that lift station, as well as, we got to get transformer and some of those other things down there, so they should have that moved out. I mean, it's okay if they stack along by the bowl, but where they put it, yes, prevents us from getting back.
An obstacle, of course, to get back, or a prison.
Even in a pickup truck, as we did today, it's a little challenge, and if you were trying to take a, any size of truck above a pickup truck, you're not going to make it. Definitely it'd be better than a pickup truck. I would just, and I don't know if Tony was going to, were you going to address this, or? I don't know, but let me just address that you do have a letter that Chief Widdom received from the local fire department, just thanking us for the work we did with them relative to after events, and we sent two of our individuals down to assist with the fire investigation, as you recall. It wasn't just the apartments, but there was, I think, 25 other structures involved, and even though I think everybody probably had a pretty good clue how the fire started, it was still, you know, you still have to go through each one of those facilities, make an assessment, make a report, and things, you know. It's pretty unusual that anyone's city would have 25 or 26 different fire scenes that they were trying to do, so our two inspectors did go and assist with that, and that's a, just a letter of appreciation for real record.
On the 110th Street, like was brought up, do you know timeframe of when that may start? And my, and the reason I'm asking, two, two things. If you remember, I brought up the concern I had with the sidewalk?
Yes.
That was replaced, and I was there just yesterday, and nothing has been.
Well, we, yeah, we've talked to, because that is getting torn out, so we didn't take a look at it.
Do you know, do you have a timeframe on that? I'd like to report back to that citizen that's asking me about it.
I don't at this point. That's one of the things with the permit request, so plans are approved, and we've kind of written up a set of stipulations. One of those is to have a construction schedule, so when are you doing what? I mean, turning dirt on site's one thing, but, you know, we need to know when they're going to do that. Are they going to do the interior road before 110th Street? So I don't have an answer, but should have a construction schedule, and then we, part of our permit requirement will be to have regular meetings, probably bi-monthly, and if that construction schedule's updated at least monthly, I mean, that's fairly typical, is you have some meeting at least once a month, and you go through the construction schedule, because some things move up, some things fall back, so as soon as we know, I will.
Yeah, it's just, you know, they left, those folks, they mow it.
Right.
And they take care of it, and it's, it's terrible.
We did try.
I mean, I was left, I mean, really disappointed at how somebody would think that that was a completed job and leave it for our, you know, for us.
And I don't, and I'll follow back up. I, I don't, both Works Director and I did right there, we looked at it. You know, the, if that was being reported for permanent, yes, no way, I think, but I don't know if we discussed with, I think it was, I think it was BPU, if I recall.
We've contacted them four times about the condition of it.
You know, at least.
And it's back on the sidewalk and.
Yeah, it looks like it'd take one bulk load of dirt, so at least not be a significant drop off.
It's been over four weeks, and if they don't respond by the end of this week, next week, Edwardville may as well have our crews do it, just for the sake of.
And the second part of that was coordinating with NASCAR, there's a race coming up, and that's always an issue.
Right.
Will they continue to, well, you know, we always get shut off.
Right. At, at the interstate, yes.
Right. And what, do we know how we're going to be handling that? Well, I don't really need to know how, but I think this should be something that we're, we're in front of.
Right.
You know, because, and, and long-term. I mean, this, when our project gets opened up, we're, on, on race weekends, we don't want people not to go north, and we don't want people to not be able to go south into our city.
Right.
And access.
And it's going to be a challenge, yeah. I don't know the answer. I will say that we have spoken in more general terms, I mean, I wouldn't say we've had specific meetings, both internally with, with the chiefs, and then I talked to the area engineer under KDOC, because some of that's negotiated with KGA and the highway patrol, so we definitely will need to have it. I think for this coming race in May, there won't really be any issues.
Yeah, it was just.
Maybe an issue for construction crews, but that, I don't expect there to be any change in the traffic for that, but I think.
Should be okay, because that's, you know, on, on weekends is when they do that.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, thanks.
Certainly. And I will just say on the 110th Street, you know, that we've made that pretty clear, that we want to maintain traffic north-south at all times now. There may be some temporary closures, but as far as a closure, similar to what we did when we redid 110th Street, was that we don't want, you know, weeks and months closure. They will be excavating the road, but they can do it in sections. They don't like that, obviously. They'd rather just dig the whole road out and do it all at one time, but we've set it, unless there's an emergency or something, you know, if it's like a one-day closure, then we can discuss that. But right now, all the plans, call for it to be open at all times, and then traffic control to make that happen.
Good.
That's it.
Good. Well, since the other chiefs aren't here, MS Director, do you have any comments to make?
No further.
All right.
I don't believe our, I don't believe our acting, set-in police officer, I don't think he wants to say. I think he was given the no, no speaking rule if I don't achieve pretty well, so.
Okay. Tammy, it's up to you now.
Yes.
I believe you have the quarterly report from School of Sports in part of you, so I'm not certain if you have any questions or what the process is, since there's no other chiefs that go through that.
You might just give a quick. Okay. So one of the things that, that in the past, obviously, you know, we keep a lot of data on police and fire, and it gets a lot more difficult in some of the other departments, and so when Tammy came on with us, you know, one of her questions was, what are we doing about this, this, and tracking and things like that? I said, this is clearly one of the areas we need to work on, and she's kind of put together a, a system, and I don't necessarily mean to give this to you every month or whatever, but I think, but she is keeping it monthly and then building quarterly, so then as we get moving forward annually, I think it'll be, you know, valuable. Kind of early, so we don't have a lot of data compared with past years, but with that, we might just want to hit the highlights first quarter, if you'd like to.
Oh, certainly. Did you receive two pages?
I think they, I got them after. Unless she's going to give you the first two pages, but I guess.
There we go, we got several.
Yeah.
We've been able to get to speak into a microphone, I'll tell you why. Today, I was on YouTube watching, reviewing a couple of council meetings, and I couldn't hear whenever it wasn't somebody that was up here speaking.
I forgot, and we could either go to the player.
Also, there, I'll run a cable.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Pretty much as Mike said, one of my goals for the Public Works Department is to track a little bit better the work that our guys actually do, because they wear many, many hats, and you, you know that, you live in Edwardville, and this is a very small department, and these crews do an exceptional job, and I really wanted to make certain that we're tracking a little bit better the work that they do do, so we really know how we're allocating our resources. Because for me, when I come here, I have a strong streets background, so I wanted to see us out there in the streets, doing work, doing patching, doing those types of things, but we are often pulled off to other priority tasks, and so that was a reason that, you know, I really wanted to make certain that we were just generally tracking the work that we do. So on the quarterly report, as you see, these are just different categories that the guys are actually performing in the field. This report really only tracks the maintenance workers and the codes enforcement officer. So basically, my admin time is not on these tasks, because I do a lot of other admin roles, and maybe down the line, I'll start tracking that. Now, I do jump into here occasionally for snow removal. For this year, we were short a man for snow removal, so I actually worked 12-hour shifts along with the men, so then my time was actually placed in the report. So basically, these are just broad categories, so I kind of wanted to give you a little information about each category. There's lots of different tasks that the guys perform under each category. For instance, drainage repairs, that includes culvert cleaning, culvert replacement, ditch cleaning, inlets being cleaned, and that kind of thing. Mowing, we have facility mowing, we have right-of-way mowing, we have part-ground mowing, we have weed spraying, so that's all in that, that category. Snow and ice removal, we're tracking snow preparation, because there's a lot more that goes into snow removal than just the individual in the truck doing the work. There's hours and hours that it takes to prepare equipment and material to get ready for a storm, and then we're tracking the time that we're actually sifting and sanding, the time we're actually plowing, and then a lot of time for snow and ice removal actually is in the storm cleanup. You know, the day, the five or six hours that it takes to actually clean up our vehicles after the snowstorm. Then we also have a special project category that includes items like the community center. Our crews go over there, and they set up tables, and they take, and they set up chairs, and they do that in the training room, and, you know, we kind of think, oh, well, that's just something they do, but that's tied away from what I envision as public works activities. When we're doing things of that nature, we're not in the field, you know, taking care of our infrastructure. And I'm not saying that that's good or that's bad, but I just kind of want to see, you know, over a period of time, you know, how we're actually utilizing our staff. Codes enforcement, there's a lot that goes into our codes enforcement. As you all know, our codes enforcement officer has been off for quite a while. He's back now, which is a good thing, but for, for instance, in codes enforcement, there's a code assessment, then they have the administrative part. Then they have the administrative part where they're sending the letters and gathering the data and they're notifying people. And there's follow-up inspections. Then that person also does animal control or they do sign removal. So, so there's a lot more items of this, in these categories than you actually see here. General maintenance. Let me touch upon that because 40% of our time for this quarter is in general maintenance. That includes the gentleman working on our trucks, doing truck maintenance, doing equipment maintenance. That's including maintenance on all of our facilities. They take care of the shop. They take care of City Hall. They take care of the community center. They take care of the parks, the concession stand, everything down at the Parks Department. They take care of the police and the fire station. And that being said, of, of all the facilities that we really, really don't have to really maintain, I have to say it's the fire department. They do an excellent job of doing everything themselves. So kudos to them. We don't spend a lot of our resources, you know, helping them with all the things over there. But so that's just kind of a breakdown of, of that first little pie chart. And then the second page, you know, I just wanted to break down the amount of hours by the different activities that we do. So you can just kind of broadly see, of course, we can all see that general maintenance, we spend most of our time on general maintenance. I personally am hoping to see things pivot. I'm trying to become more proactive with our department, come up with more plans for street maintenance and ditch cleaning and things of that nature and tracking our repairs a little bit better than maybe we have in the past. And so that's kind of my goal over the next year to incorporate, incorporate that into what we're doing in our department. Sign repairs. Now, that was, that was interesting.
Glad you brought that up because I was, I was going, what, how can it be that?
I have, we have our sign repairs as well. We did a little project on Edwardsville Drive up there. Then we upgraded all of our signs on Wood End and down 98th Street. One of the things that I see here is that our signs really need some TLC. There's an opportunity to bring all of our signs up to MUTCD standards, which is actually required. What we did on Wood End is a lot of those signs were undersized. And we heard that from the police department as well. A lot of the speed limit signs, they were not standard MUTCD size. So we had to upgrade those speed limit signs. And we, there was an area that changed to 45 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. So we had to do additional signage. Then we're having issues with trucks running all the shoulders. So we just put thousands of dollars into about two to three years ago on 98th Street. So we not only upsized those signs, but we installed more no parking signs. So it can be more enforced by our ED department. So, yeah, but, and, and you think signs are something fast. Everything, there's time involved in every activity that we do. You have to go measure. There's standard heights, but they have to be, we have to call and locate, which I do here. But, you know, that is the act of setting the signs in the field. So, I mean, nothing is really as fast and streamlined as, as you think it is. So that was interesting. Snow removal. I mean, I kind of wanted to touch upon snow removal. This is just the quarterly report from January to March. I'm also keeping data for snow seasons. That's not really on here. This year, we've kind of changed maybe a little bit the way we have attacked snow and ice removal than in the past. We have equipment now and, and we have staff. And the goal is to, you know, utilize the staff and equipment that we have in conjunction with our contractor. So basically, from all the data that, you know, I collected and we've tracked over just our snowstorms, we had six snow and ice events from 2016 to 2017, from last November through March. Our total out-of-pocket cost was about $17,400. Of that, we only utilized a contractor for $3,100. So out of six storms, we only called the contractor in funds. And that was because all of our events were really snow and, or primarily little flurries and ice events, and we handled that ourselves. Certainly, if we had had larger snowstorms, we would have had the contractor for his snow removal abilities. But we do have two spreaders, so we kind of took that on as something that we weren't going to be providing ourselves for snow removal. This report says four events because that's just January to March, but I kind of wanted to give you that background. And so some other interesting stats that maybe aren't really in here. I've also kind of been tracking like the number of service requests our guys are doing. Those are not only from citizens or that are brought up by council meetings, but by us internally as well. Those are different than the day-to-day proactive work tasks that they are, you know, assigned and that they're doing. So over the course of the last three months, the guys, the field operations crews did about 70 service requests on top of their everyday work schedule. And our codes enforcement, as of the end of March, they did about 31, they keeps investigating about 31 codes violations. Right now, I think we're up to about almost 50, including April. But anyway, so that's just kind of a recap of what we're doing in, in public works. You know, we're not trying to overcomplicate, you know, the work that we're doing and spending a lot of time tracking everything that we're doing because the reality is we have such a small staff that we need the hands, we need the hands in the field. So, you know, I, I think this is a good start and hopefully, you know, we will see where our resources need to be allocated, maybe for the future, to see where our needs are. So do you have any questions or?
I do. Regarding the codes you brought up, and I was going to ask this when it came around. You know, you were here when Mr. Carson had made the codes complaint down in, in town here on Blake and.
Unless, unless a 12 or 13 items, yes.
Yeah, it was, I would like to see anything that we've done on that. Whenever there's a, if you were around.
We can get that to you.
And we, we have been working, you know, sometimes I know, you know, somebody may say it's a code complaint and it, it may not be. I mean, it may be something that is an annoyance or something, but yet technically it's not a code complaint as, as, you know, somebody parking in the street is an example. It's not in and of itself. Like now, if it's a disabled vehicle sitting out there, you know, then it, it is. So sometimes we'll get a complaint. I just use something like that. Like this car has been parked out there on the street for the last three weeks. And it may have, but it also may have moved during that time. And so it's, it's still a complaint. We're still going to follow it up. But, you know, the response may be that there's no, there's no further action. Not, you know, as you know, not unlike police things where you get calls and you follow them up, that there may not be further action. So we'll get a response.
And regarding the codes too, you know, we kind of changed the way maybe a little bit that we were doing business. We're making certain that we're tracking all of our contact with the citizens a little bit more than maybe we had in the past. We started a courtesy letter that goes out first instead of a ten-day notice. Basically says, hey, you know, we're trying to improve the, you know, the quality of, of the city of Edwardsville. You know, we have code ordinances. You know, this has been brought to our attention. Please work with us to, you know, address this in your property, this, this and this. And, you know, then we'll follow up with another letter and then we'll make contact with the property owner. So we're trying to be a little more customer-friendly in reaching out in a more little positive manner. Because instead of just hitting with a ten-day notice and they may be receiving court, we don't comply. We thought that was a good way to approach this issue since it seems like some code violations may have been lingering on for some time.
Remind me how we desire citizens to submit codes concerns or public works requests. We talked about one point, our website being a tool that would help be able to do that. How are we asking for, for citizens to share that information with staff?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we have an online request. I thought there was, but I, but I would have to verify that. Now, we have done some things on the Hot Shot Newsletter and things like that, trying to get the word out there.
I think, I think we just talked about at one point that we are a smaller staff, that you can't be everywhere and see everything. So we kind of need the 4,500, 5,000 people that are to help imbibe those eyes, order staff, to let you know when we see things that need to be addressed. And if we don't have a consistent place, I, I challenge us to think about, well, how, what can we do to leverage the systems that we have to streamline that a little bit so we can get that information to you?
Well, and another, another little thing that we talked about in the codes department is, you know, taking little sections of the city. We're concentrating on certain sections so we're not, you know, concentrating all of our efforts and picking on one little quadrant at a time. You know, we're going to spend about maybe eight weeks in one area. We'll address the concerns that are known there. Then we'll move to another section of the city to make certain that, you know, we're, everyone's been treating fairly equitably. And so that we're getting, you know, eyes, not saying that we're not addressing other codes issues sometimes else because staff is always, you know, following codes issues. They're being reported to us. Citizens call me all the time about pockets and things of that nature. So, I mean, they are finding, you know, finding a way to communicate to us. But, you know, as, as us being proactive, that's kind of the little course that we kind of set out for our codes. So we're going to, you know, I'm right around the city.
I, I will just say, and I don't know if you can, but I know about that, that our code enforcement officer is retiring end of.
In the May, June 1st.
June 1st. So we're going to be going through a hiring transition. We're already, we're already in the middle. But just so you know, Rick has decided to retire, retire, I think. And so as you all may know, he has some property down in Lake of Ozarks. I think he's looking forward to spending some additional time down there.
You're calling his name more than Mrs. Come.
As you know, he, he had retired prior to coming here from the state government, the police department. And so, and as you know, he had some health scare there. So I think he just reassessed and just decided he must have missed some of that time.
So are we going to be posting position?
Yes. We're kind of re, we're, I think we're going to make sure our job description is inclusive because quite honestly, that job, Doug, you know, I mean, he did a lot of right-of-way mowing as an example, you know. So are we still expecting that or are we going to be proactive on the code side? So we're going through the job description and we plan to post it there.
Yeah, I, I think we need a codes enforcement officer.
I agree.
A hundred percent.
Yeah. And we, and we use that community service officer as, you know, yeah, we're going to replace it. Don't get me wrong. We just want to make sure that we're putting the right, get the right person back in there and, and that. And tonight, you know, I just wanted to, Tammy, take a little extra time. It's just because we often find, spend less time talking, so to speak, about public works. And this is great information from my standpoint as we go into budgets and things like that. So we're trying to do, you know, you don't want to spend so much time while you're doing to put much of that in to get data out. But, you know, for us to have, even say, okay, hey, we need person or equipment or things. Your general first question, which is rightfully so, is why do you need those? You know, where do you do it? And so this helps to address some of those questions.
So I appreciate you.
Good. Any other questions?
Tape, okay. Oh, cancelled. Probably want to start in the middle sometime, don't you?
Okay. No, it's a good idea. I did that one time.
You did?
Yes, I did. Yeah, we're going to start with you. Then we're going to go to Margaret.
Oh, man. I mean, I have big bombshells to drop in. I am proud that the chiefs are doing whatever they're doing. Advancing as long as they stay with us and don't decide they want to be one of those vacant positions at the end of the.
I've heard that from many of them.
Yeah, I would love to see that. Appreciate the assistant from the boss.
Yeah, Morgan's been a great gentleman.
The other thing on the, the reports on the, that was working great. That's really cool information to get. You know, you don't realize a lot of the things that you do, do on a daily basis. I'm a little bit concerned with the maintenance part of the community center and so forth. It seems like we could figure out a way to do that a little better, you know, where we didn't have to tie somebody up, put in chairs or something like that. But I think that could be worked out. I think you got a good handle on, on a direction to go, to make that improvement. I agree on the codes enforcement. And I think all of us agree on the codes enforcement because there's things around here that don't look very good. I think that maybe the Hot Shot Newsletter could maybe just have a running statement in there of, you know, we're trying to keep our city clean. You know, remember we're having our dumpster day and.
The hot topic. Zach and I talked about that.
Yeah, I had this in that time, you know, here three weeks ago. Maybe something that just runs in there constantly. You know, there's always the high school stuff in there and, you know, just a reminder that it could get a little bit more serious around here with codes than it has been in the past. And I think we're all pretty proud of our community. I think that would be good. Could there be anything done on the Great Lake of Edwardsville outside the ATM machine? I, I don't know why that bothers me so much, but if you go through the ATM machine and you want to turn south, you're going to get wet.
We actually are working with City of Shawny which, because after Edwardsville Day is coming and they're going to be bringing equipment and material and they're going to show us how to utilize their machine. And in the future, we may be able to utilize it ourselves if we're trained on it. So we're partnering with them. But we're also becoming more proactive. And we're also, like every two weeks, we're going to do some patching. And that's the number one on that, that day.
Because that, you know, that is an entrance, a main entrance actually at Edwardsville. It's going to south a little bit here before 200. But 4th and 32 Highway is Edwardsville basically.
I, I will say, I think that, you know, the no parking, we got about signs earlier, right? So, you know, the no parking signs are there and the property owner actually took the curb stops, I think from the Dollar General where they poured curb and put those over there right behind that. And from what we understand, apparently, that, those spaces may have been being rented out by a third party. He doesn't own the land. So apparently they weren't happy that they've been parked vehicles over there anymore.
There's a lot of visions. So the turn is involved.
Well, without it being between those.
They need to get it in there. We need to get our share of that.
But I, I think since we've done the no parking and that, I mean, we're not seeing the trucks parked over there, which was a significant issue.
That helps my, my move because that was just a pet peeve of mine that, you know, if you, if you're going to be a truck driver, it's pretty hard to be a truck driver and live in a place where you can't park your truck.
I understand.
Thank you. That's all from me.
We're going to be at the market.
I totally agree with Garrett that, that city, we do need a codes officer. Absolutely. And Tammy, wonderful presentation here. I will add a few things that, I know the Public Works Department helped with. I've been on the Parks and Recs tour for I don't know how many years, but prior to last year, we used to help set up all the Christmas decorations. And we brought in the trees and stuff. And we would be out there freezing cold. And the public works, they would help us, but they pretty much took over. I can't thank them enough. They're wonderful. We would, it'd be 10 degrees out there. I'd be about crying. Man, the real tree we brought in. So anyway, they're wonderful, wonderful. I think pretty much a lot of the police still there, same people. I did want to ask you two, Mike. Last week or two, there were some trucks down there in the corner of Ford Street and K32. Couple people were thinking, uh-oh, what's going on there? I think they were just parked there because some roadwork may be going on.
Okay. And it could have been that the gas company had a.
There was a few trucks that they're.
By the, you know, they had the road closed off that.
But there was a few people thinking, uh-oh, what if they're starting something in there?
The construction company was doing that replacement.
That's what I thought too. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. A little deceiving there. I'm excited for Edwardsville Days.
We are too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my God.
It's going to be a beautiful weekend.
Yes, it is. Repeat of this one. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Jason. Really appreciate the data tracking on public works. And are, is it, is it, if memory is working me correctly, I'm thinking that it's about the time of year that we see the road repair list of when we're going to start looking at possibilities for upcoming road repair season. Is that, is that coming soon or?
Well, the, the ones that, that we are targeting for this year, that kind of last year would be the.
The 7th and High and.
Well, yeah, we're looking at the whole 7th High Street, that area as a kind of a grind and replace. And then I never really.
It should be coming within the next couple of weeks.
The Mill and Overlay though is for, what's the.
Steel, steel and under the segment that's.
Where that, where that, four places are at.
Pipe thing.
Where we had to replace the pipe last year. And that, those were the ones that were primary on our lists that we had talked about doing. And then that pretty much finishes up all of our neighborhoods to receive paving, product to neighborhood paving. And then again, as was discussed, next week, it's called a flow patch machine. So you've probably seen that somewhere. Some people like it, some don't. But. So, you probably seen that somewhere. Some people like it some though. But it's kind of a hot asphalt mix that fills cracks and potholes and things. And it's what actually comes out of a, like a huge, large hose kind of situation. It's somewhat new technology. But you see it on highways used more and more now too.
Are we nearing the time where we need to revisit the Pacer study and, and look at that again?
I don't know. We need, we, we, we'd update what we probably have to do is maybe go back and do a full assessment of those segments. So, we've done a good job of the, obviously, the ones we repaid, we updated those standards to, you know, a nine or 10 or whatever. If those ones that were fives, you know, and they dropped to a four or a three, that, that's what we need to bring.
That's what, that's my concern is are there areas where the roads are actually degrading quicker than we thought? Because it's been a couple of years since we've done this stuff.
Sure. I, I think we do need to readdress that and bring in a, like the person that did it before, you know, who may be happy to come do it. Now that we have all the segments and all the pieces and things, it's, it's not, are pulling back out and evaluating those segments or maybe using some engineering interim or something. But we'll, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
I too thought that the Public Works report was very informative. Thank you for that. Trash, again, is on my list. And so, the UG mode today down 98th Street from State Avenue, they stopped on the north side of I-70, which I know that there's always so moes farther down and where's the, it was still line start. But, so I don't know who, I don't know how you guys figure that out or work it out, but it's not, that area's not getting mowed.
So, between River View and I-70 has been left out basically.
Yeah. And again, under-
I thought we had, I thought we had, I thought we had that.
Well, sometimes, sometimes you see a moe and they'll come from State Avenue all the way down to River View.
That's typically what they've done.
So, anyway, but.
The line is in between. We do, you know, when that, that pipe failed up there-
Right.
Everybody kind of, I, I'd say everybody agreed to, here's the line that we even talked about. I remember snow and ice removed and they said, we're gonna go to River View and make our turnaround. And so, we'll take care of that scrap. So, we can, we can re- reengage with them.
And under those, and I know you can only access them when it's dry, but under the bridges on 98th Street, there's just trash, trash all over. I gotta mention that a couple of weeks ago about some, like somebody moved out and dumped all their stuff under the bridge. There's, it's like water bed or something. All broke up, laying in there. And it's under, under those bridges as you're going north by 98th Street. That's all it is.
I, I, would just follow up maybe. I do know that we had, as far as the debt involved, which does address the levers dump that you're talking about, but to focus on those areas from I-70 south down towards Kansas Avenue. Because I, I think a lot of times they focus a lot, which are probably the worst areas, you know, north and south of the river, say from K-32 to maybe Johnson Drive, you know, they, they focus a lot in there. And so, we did send them some maps and things. So, here's some, you know, clearly areas that need to be addressed. I, I can't say they have or haven't followed up on that, but I know Zach has been in a lot of contact with it.
If that's what I wanted, if it didn't occur, I'll put it plus.
Okay, yeah. That does get bad too.
Seems like they're always pretty good. K-32 South.
Right.
You know?
No, that, I, I would concur with you.
Pretty good.
They focus a lot more K, I'd say, between Johnson Drive and K-32 is kind of their focus areas.
Yeah.
They probably do that.
Probably trash only blows up when they're turning into their business, right?
Yeah. I always get one. Take the fish.
Check it.
How, how was the cemetery mowing? Do we have any report, any?
You wanna address? I mean, they've done like two mowings and-
They have done two mowings. You know, the grass didn't get mowed the first time. It was done with the third week of April. And so, it was really, really tall. Lots of clumps. What we expected, we really expected it to take about three weeks in order for it to get, you know, to a good manageable level. There was an issue that they had to stop because of a funeral. We really didn't get a list of, you know, of, I guess, burials that are going to take place. We didn't get it for that week. So, we had to stop. And so, then he had to come back and he had to trim. He actually mowed today and it actually was pretty good. They didn't get some of the clumps blown off the back and some of the headstones. When we walk through that, talk through that, he's gonna do a better job in the future. So, you know, I just think it'll take, you know, a couple of weeks to get, you know, in a good place. He's very capable, wants to do a good job for us. So, we're hoping for the best.
Okay, great. As we develop the north end, it can be more and more critical that the traffic light situation over I-70 at 110 Street. I'm sure dealing with KDOT, it's a very long process. Have we initiated any kind of discussion about traffic studies? It says it's fairly dangerous if you're coming west and returning south. It's kind of a blind turn to a great degree now. We started increasing traffic counts and, and we really need to get out in front of that.
Well, we had a meeting and I don't, it's been a while back, but with UG and KDOT and us and I believe Village South, I don't know if they were there or not, they did a traffic study as part of their project and about timing. And at that point, it was, it was that particular traffic study's recommendation, I think, what would be on the north side. So, on, you know, the north side of I-70, that a traffic light is already warranted and that potential ones on the south side. At that point, UG did not feel it was warranted. Of course, both of those lights would be in their jurisdiction. On north and south side, technically, it's in their jurisdiction. But I will follow up with them again, 'cause I didn't, we didn't get much. They were gonna follow up and review those traffic studies with their, their own or signal lights at, under, you know, both sides of the bridge. Technically, they, you know, they could be, we could take responsibility for the south one and take responsibility for the north one. But from trying to make sure the signals are linked and things, it probably does make more sense for a single entity to be responsible for the lights and the loops and all those kind of things. And so, technically, the poles and the lights would be the inside of the UG side. We start south with the right-of-way line, the lights would be-
So, they're not constructed and managed by KDOT?
They are not. KDOT doesn't actually manage and operate signal lights. They authorize things within their right-of-way. In this case, it's actually K2K right-of-way. But lights, all your signal lights are actually maintained by some other jurisdiction, a city. It could be a county, but they don't themselves maintain the lights. They do warrant studies and, you know, they don't want unwarranted lights within their realm of control, being the interstate, that potential impact. Their worry is if you put lights up and it's holding traffic and it gets out onto the interstate and it has the impact. So, they would do it from that state. But any lights put up there will all come from the jurisdiction.
And pavement, maintenance, who does that?
The cities are, we, we basically have responsibility from the, where the brick median's at, south is our responsibility. You know, it's in, KDOT has certain right-of-ways and they control whether you can have driveways. And then everything north of that, including the bridge surface is the UG's. They're mowing and all those kind of things. So, basically, from the end of the brick median there and north is UG responsible.
I don't even steal that. May I ask somebody, may I have a question?
And we have had meetings or-
Yes.
We have had meetings about some of those, those issues and, and maintenance. Now, KDOT could get involved or actually KTA, just like we, you know, when they redid the bridge, you know, the surface of Kansas Avenue, the bridge portion, technically, that's under what's called K-Link. And so, in reality, we have responsibility for that, just as we have responsibility for the River View Avenue Bridge over 435. We have responsibility for the payments below 435 on William. So, they're within KDOT's rights of way, but under those local agreements, it says this party and this party's the responsible party. And they give you some negligible amount. They would love to give K-32 to us to maintain as well, but I don't think for $500 or $1,000 a year would be in our best interest. So, maybe a little bit more than that, but probably not much.
You may or may not know, I guess at the end, first of May, Shelley's supposed to be vacated from that house where that, that Main 4 lot. Do you know if there's any construction plans for the house?
You're talking about on-
On the newly acquired piece.
Okay. Well, my understanding, right now, they have, they are withholding any demolition of that house. I wasn't sure if they had a, were doing a month-to-month lease with them or not. Like, the plans that they submitted show that on hold and not to demo. If they demo, we'll have to come in and demo from you.
And if, if she doesn't move out, we need to make sure that it is safely vacated?
Okay. I, I was, I, I do know that they said they were holding that and not planning to demo it at this time.
Okay. Is it?
My only comments, once again, like everybody else, Tammy, thank you very much for your report. This has been very beneficial. I think that's the first time I've ever seen one. And most, well, everybody here, first time we've seen a report like that. It's been pretty good. The only other comment I had to make is, is that the next Monday night, May the 1st, at 6 o'clock in the training room, we will have a work session regarding the sewer moner area.
I'll give you my clip. As a public meeting, correct?
Yes.
Are we sending out invitations? Are we sending out notices?
It's, it's a public, it's, well, it's, it's a workstation. It's not a public hearing.
I understand that, but it's open to the public.
Yeah, it's open to the public.
To attend, but not-
Not participate.
Participate.
And I really would encourage people to attend it so that we all have the same body of information.
And we consider, we, I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, I mean, we, we can send out a special notice through like the Hot Shop link, you know, which goes to several hundred people and posted on the website. It's a, it's a little hard to necessarily say, so who do you, who specifically do you contact? But, but yeah, so we'll, we'll get some notices out there as much as possible. You know, we wouldn't send notice like a 200-foot notice because, you know, it's like, I will say, I think that the purpose of the meeting, I'm gonna put a little bit broader in the sense of talking about, you know, that project is called the Compass Center Project. It's kind of the project name. So, I think they, and it'll be presented by Lane 4 to, to try to entertain discussion, but not the overall project. You know, there are probably some questions that they're not gonna be able to answer. They just don't know yet. It's, they don't have a, at least something to change a specific tenant. So, they could say, it's this tenant with this things and this stuff. But really an opportunity to kind of talk about the whole process, have a process work, what their visions of it. I mean, they, they've got some, you know, elevation concepts that they wanna present, you know. Again, so that's gonna, you know, change because it's conceptual. But I, I think they're trying to get a better idea of what it is. I think some of this was probably presented at the planning commission meeting in Bonner Springs, but I, I don't know.
For, for future-
Right.
Things that we are involved in. I think that it would be good to have this meeting-
Right.
Prior to us getting-
Yes.
For a living.
Yes, absolutely.
So, get, get everybody on board.
Right.
Some people, yeah, yeah. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
And if I could, before you smack the gavel, Quiet Zone.
Yes.
What, what's the update on that?
Met with-
It's so noisy.
So, we, we received a notice that they wanted to meet with us early last week. I don't remember the, the exact day. Man, the Olson and Associate folks, obvious us and Bonner Springs, we actually rode over there together. And Commissioner Walters was there and Brent Thompson, engineer, because he's the project kind of leader on that and, and the rest. At this point, I would say that they are moving forward to kind of next steps being kind of design concepts or redesign concepts. They, they did their notice to the railroad and, and the railroad had some comments back.
So, you know where I'm going.
Yeah.
So, what about funding?
Well-
Who's paying for it?
I, I was told that they had about $2.3 or $4 million, I think, that they put in the current year budget to fund it. And now, the current estimate has the crossings costing about 1.2 million.
So, so say it's saying again, 1.2 million-
1.2 million is the estimate to redo-
An individual crossing?
Swingster, from Swingster Road to 98th Street. To redo each of those crossings to make them quiet zone eligible. I'm assuming that doesn't include the engineering. I think that's a construction estimate. But there, I mean, the UG has been paid for that. One of the changes that, that they noted was that at this point, all of the crossing arms, their locations are set such that they won't have to relocate those arms or do double gates, which takes the maintenance cost out of there. So, the, you know, the 15,000 allocation comes out of there. Now, there may be with the sand plant because it's still an unimproved crossing as it is now. The darkened out gates, there, there may have to be some kind of indemnity piece in there. But the bigger one was the add tree over in Bonner because that's not part of the quiet zone, but they wanna make, you know, but they prefer that the whistles not be blowed, put the things in there. And so, I guess there, some of the discussions there. So, it's, it's moving forward with, I guess, some preliminary design work at this point. I, I think we've been clear. I think Bonner Springs has been clear. You know, it's not necessarily opposed to a quiet zone, but how's it gonna impact our community? I'll tell you that the other area that I expressed, I wouldn't say concern, but something that has to be kept in mind is we're looking at 100 feet on either side of these railroad things. And on Fourth Street, that's not sufficient. I mean, if you're gonna tie into the curb and gutter and do all of that stuff, you know, it's more than 100 feet from, from a city standpoint. And, you know, so how does that impact what we may do or what we might have to do if you widen the crossing? What are you doing with the rest of the road in this section? So, that was a concern I raised and will continue to raise as we move forward. So, the other crossings, 98th and 9th Street, quite honestly, are fairly simple. Medians in the road, you know, minor paving width and, and most of, both of those, I think, have curb and gutter. Most of the sections up to the railroad. So, they're, they're, they're fairly easy.
I'm, I'm all for free improvements.
Yeah.
I, I like it.
Oh, I'm, I don't mind free improvements. I don't, I, but I mind the, the cost of maintenance. That's the thing that bothered me about the whole thing. And I, I was not hesitant and informed that we were not interested in maintaining a $60,000 year increase.
And I, and I think the message from both Bonner and Edwardsville is that where the city's impacted by this section of it is pretty much the same, right? We're not opposed to the quiet zone.
Yeah.
We're fine. We wanna be a part of the process. Our concern is, what are, what are those costs to our individual communities? And whether, obviously, we'll have approval at some point because it's designed public roads and things that, that impact us. And, and, you know, from a priority, it, we're, how does that compare with, with our individual priorities? And so, we have something to look at. It's kind of hard to say the answer.
You also mentioned they had some quantity in their budget. Who was they and what was the quantity again?
The unified government set aside, as I understand, and this was from Commissioner Walters, that more than $2 million. I'm sorry, I just don't remember the, the-
Two at one time. I understood it was two and a half, but I don't know whether-
Yeah, and it's about in that range. So, roughly $2.5 million to construct these quiet zones, to make the crossings as quiet zones, including the design and engineering. And at the meeting we had after they went back out, did some more work, Olson and Associates is the engineers that have been retained, now have an estimated cost- Associates, who's the engineers that have been retained, now have an estimated cost of about $1.2 million.
Wasn't it like $4.5 before or something?
Well, it was, that was the whole, it was $6 million for the whole thing all the way to KTK, all the way down to 59th or something like that.
It was about $2.3 million relative to crossings in our city at one end.
Well, that's where we were.
Yeah. So, now, the 4th Street, the 4th Street crossing, I'll just tell you, from all of those, is the highest cost and most complicated, because you've got pedestrians that we've got to deal with, sidewalks.
And entrance to the bank.
There's right-of-way issues, there's...
So to think that we shouldn't be at the table during this, this...
Oh, we are now.
And they're, now, they are willing to come make a presentation, my suggestion was, well, what do you have to show us that you have everything? Show me five pictures of five crossings and a number, and can't say who's paying for what and when and how, I said, I don't think it's valuable, this is... So, but if you want them to come, they're happy to come anytime you want them to come.
Can I only speak for myself?
I don't.
Not to tell her something, not to get, tell her something, get too old.
They don't have anything concrete, yeah. If there's nothing else to do, we...